We are going to just proceed and apologies that you will not be able to see us on this one, but we'll just go with audio so that we can be respectful of everyone's time. And so it is 10:13 and are we recording? Yes, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order the chair notes. There's a quorum present. Let's do the flag salute, the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go into 2.0 which is additions and revisions to the agenda. Do you guys have anything?
I have one little thing. You know, we've gone through the weed department of the road. We probably need to get legal involved if I'm not talking about announcements, but we need to get, I think, formalize the document with Southern Water Conservation District in regards to the weed committee.
Okay.
Move forward with it in a couple of weeks.
Since we It's one of those days.
If it can go wrong, it will go wrong.
Can everyone hear us again?
Yes, this is Catherine.
Okay, we are back. So you did not miss anything. Basically where we were is we added under unfinished business by 5.5 which is discussion of the weed board agreements or configuration. Anything else you want to add? Okay. And let's move on to 3.0 correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting, speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address and limit comments to three minutes. For those who are dialing in via your phone, it starts six to unmute yourself. If you're here on your computer, it's in the lower left-hand corner of your screen. And then I just always like to remind folks that we are very informal here. So as we move through the agenda, if there are items that you wish to provide input on or ask questions about, we welcome that. Is there any public comment at this point? Okay, let's go into correspondence. We've got several things for you. First thing is a letter from our assessor, Chad Wilkins, basically certifying the homestead rebate program, which is a requirement that he does for us every year. So folks who are interested can see how the rebate has changed year over year. And that is in the court's packet. We also have the quarterly report from our veteran service officer, Paul Conway. If you, I always like to remind folks, if you know of a veteran who is not currently connected with Paul, please consider connecting him. He is a fantastic resource for veterans, healthcare for all kinds of things. And we want to make sure that that we're connecting folks. He is fabulous. And that is in our packet as well. There is a thank you note from the Gillum County 4-H International Club, just thanking the county for a special project grant that we provided to help with some of their fundraising costs for their next trip. And then there is also an email from Lee Johnson, just notifying us that he is planning to step down at the end of the year from his planning commission seat. So that will also come up later in discussion today. Then we have a few emails from our friend Les, who is also on the line. Les, do you want me to just summarize these or did you want to actually speak on the record about the items that you emailed us about?
Judge Campbell, let's regard however you want to proceed with it. I just wanted to make sure that my comment was received by the commissioners as well as the judge. And you know, given that I did email directly to them, it obviously has been.
Yeah, so I'll just note for the record, then there's a couple of emails. I will summarize them if you want to read the whole thing. Those are always part of the course packet, which are available online. But Les provided some input on the planning decision that's on our docket under agenda items 1.5 and 3.2. Really committing, I think, you, Michelle, in part for the thoughtful process and work that has gone into this application. So if you're interested in reading that, that again is available online. And there was also some back and forth regarding the road committee and requirements for public meeting laws in the document that we're looking at a little bit later this morning. Commissioners, I think you were on our legal counsel's reply. And so basically Les' request is that in the document that creates our road committee that we specify that they are subject to public meeting law. And our attorney looked at that and said that that was fine to add that language if we wanted to. However, by virtue of them being a product of Gillum County, they are subject to public meeting law without actually saying that out loud. So so it sounds like that may be resolved, but we'll talk about that a little bit further. And then finally, regarding the planning commission appointment, which is under agenda item 6.4. Les sent an email lending his support to Tina Potter's application to be appointed. And yeah, so you can see in all three letters, he would like to read those. And the court has less copies than all of those as well. And I think that is all I have for correspondence. Let's move into 4.0 consent agenda. It's a short one this month or this meeting. Questions?
I did revise a few typos on the other minutes.
Have those been posted then to the corrected minutes?
No.
And and those were?
Does it code for common and then they're just telling here?
And what's in the meeting place?
Yes.
And we made those corrections. So I moved to approve the consent agenda with the fractions made to the minute.
Second.
And moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda with corrections made to the October 5th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, please. Okay, let's go on to unfinished business. Commissioners, do you want to just proceed with audio or do you want to switch out the L?
Do we want to ask?
Okay, public, we have the opportunity to switch out an L and use the courts. Would you guys prefer to see us on video or do you want us to proceed with audio?
It will take a little bit.
It will take a few minutes for us to switch over. Do you have a preference?
I'm fine with audio. No offense.
None taken.
Les, you okay with us just continuing with audio?
I'm fine as long as that audio does continue.
Okay, perfect. Okay, just we get to see you, Les. Send me, send me a message if for whatever reason we lose audio. And we will make sure that we get, we stop and get it fixed. Okay. Let's move into 5.1, which is consider deliberations, continued deliberations and consider approval for planning file numbers. L 22, 2022 dash L 02, T dash 2022 dash 01, Z dash 2022 dash 01, G 2022 dash 01, and 2022 dash CUP dash 02, a consolidated application by chemical waste management of the Northwest for a goal three exception, plan amendment, zone change from exclusive farm use to industrial, MG, and conditional use permit for expansion of a hazardous waste treatment facility. Pat, do you want to declare?
Yeah, I will recuse myself. It's a conflict of interest. My wife is a waste management board and involved in the process.
All right. Okay, um, so for those who cannot see us, Pat is Commissioner Shannon is stepping away from the table. And so Commissioner Wilkins and I will proceed with our deliberations. And so where last we met was we held our hearing during our last, or two meetings ago now. And there were several items that were still being worked out between the applicant and staff and legal counsel. Michelle, do you kind of want to walk us through how those got resolved? Do you feel?
Oh.
Or do you want me to?
We can ask legal if they want to add.
Okay.
So the direction that I took away from the court meeting after the hearing was that we needed some additional information to work through some of the conditions of approval that were presented. So both parties did come together and we met. And so in your packet is a compilation of those. It was like 18, 15, I think 14 and 17. We made those changes. Everybody agrees to the changes that the court suggested that we work on. And there was an addition of 19, which I think it was inherited that we get a survey. And so that was just added. So that was something that was discussed and we pulled it out and made it its own condition rather than lump it into an existing one. So the intent was already there. We just pulled it out and made it very specific. And I think everyone's on board. And I do know that we do have county council and waste management council on the Zoom if they wanted to add any comments.
Garrett, Tommy, did you guys have anything you wanted to add?
Sure, this is Tommy Brooks. I don't have much to add. I mean, the, despite the long discussion that we had at that meeting, I think we were, we walked away feeling like we were on the same page and just needed to make sure the words captured the discussion that the court had and that we had had. So I really appreciate staff buckling down and letting us work through and get their words right on the paper. And I hope the court finds that this matches that discussion and we're ready to move forward.
Garrett, did you have anything you wanted to fill us in on?
Nothing further. I think everything that Michelle and Tommy has said is accurate in my view as well. And the the direction I took was to to bring back some revised conditions of approval for the court's consideration at these deliberations. And so now it's the the court's job to tell us if we got it right and take action on the ultimate application.
Sherry, did you?
No.
Was like anything you had questions?
But we accomplished what we had intended.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't see anything that I'm concerned about. I think everything that we discussed at our previous deliberations is covered. So are you ready to move forward?
I am.
Okay.
First motion?
Yeah, you just have to do, we'll do a separate motion on the ordinance. So it's either option one or option two. Option one, I think, is if you don't want to make any changes to what Michelle's presented to us.
I moved to have the first reading. I moved to accept the first. No, no. Do I not have the right?
Did I miss that one?
This is why, by the way, we write out these planning decisions in a very lengthy motion that you're about to be.
And we like to get all the wording for that. I moved to approve Gillum County Planning Department file number L 2022 dash L 02 slash T dash 2022 dash 01 slash Z dash 2022 dash 01 slash G dash 2022 dash 01 slash 2022 dash CUP dash 02 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded that we approved Gillum County Planning Department file numbers. L 2022 dash L 02 slash T dash 2022 dash 01 slash Z dash 2022 dash 01 slash G dash 2022 dash 01 slash 2022 dash CUP dash 02 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval of approval contained in the staff report. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Shannon abstained. And then this is the second piece of that, which is 5.2, consider first reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 06, adopting amendments to the Gillum County Comprehensive Plan and approving a goal three exception, a zone change from exclusive farm use or EFU to industrial, general industrial, which is MG, and a conditional use permit for expansion of existing hazardous waste facility on approximately 935 acres. And this is just the reading, Sherry.
Okay, I moved to have the first reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 06 by title only.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded that we have the first reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 06 by title. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, in the county court of the state of Oregon, in and for the county of Gillum, ordinance number 2022 dash 06 in the matter of an ordinance adopting amendments to the Gillum County Comprehensive Plan and approving a goal three exception, a zone change from exclusive farm use, EFU, to industrial, general industrial, MG, and a conditional use permit for expansion of an existing hazardous waste facility.
I moved to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 06 by title only.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the first reading of ordinance number 2022 dash 06 by title only. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so for ordinances, for those who are following along at home, those require two readings. And so the second reading is tentatively scheduled now, definitely scheduled for November 2nd, which will be the next meeting of the court, and that will be held in Camden. And okay, great work. Michelle?
Was he collaborating with her with another applicant?
A heavy list. Okay, we will have Commissioner Shannon come back to the table. So we have a full committee. And let's move on to 5.3, which is consider approval of resolution number R 2022 dash 16, a resolution amending resolution number 2019 dash 01, establishment of Gillum County Road Committee. So this, just to summarize for the public, was something that we discussed back on October, during the October 5th meeting. And the court discussed making some updates to the to the document that created the road committee. And so we actually discussed those previously. And then this is really just formality coming back to us. But to summarize, section three updates the terms of the office by zone, sets reappointment to three years following our initial appointments. And section five requires the committee to hold quarterly meetings. That was silent previously. And so that gives the committee a little bit more direction on our expectations. And section six requires the committee chair to work with county staff to schedule and organize meetings. And the draft resolution before you was prepared by our legal counsel. And again, we noted earlier, Mr. Rourke's email regarding public meeting law. So the only question I would have for the commissioners is if you would like to make a further amendment or if Lori is.
We add it to the resolution and it's there. There's no questions. It's come up in the meeting before.
Okay.
Whether we need to follow up on maybe not and if we just put it there.
Okay. So then what we would be doing is I think you could do a motion to approve the resolution as amended with the public meeting language. And then I'll ask Lori to actually add that if that, does that work for you guys? Okay.
I recommend approving resolution number R 2022 dash 16 as amended.
You need to move to approve, not recommend.
As amended to include the language regarding state requirements to operate under public meeting law.
And I will second it. It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution number R 2022 dash 16 as amended to include language requiring the committee to follow state public meeting laws. And is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will make a note and have that fixed and moving forward. 5.0, staying in the same vein, is consider appointment of Gillum County Road Committee members. Who wants to take this one? Is Julie?
Julie does.
Should I just summarize it?
Yeah, if you could maybe summarize how many openings we have, who's applied and sort of what zones they're in.
So we have five openings because we're just gonna restart with everybody. Everybody that was previously on the committee wants to continue where they were. And though I think that we should continue that way. We had six letters. One person wasn't on the board. And I just think that everybody should stay where they were. Make it most simple for that.
So commissioners, it looks like, does?
Yeah, I would just add in there was that since we didn't have a strong resolution in place regarding length of terms and meeting requirements that, and we've only had one meeting so far this year, working on a second that we put this into play with the existing committee. And the terms will now be set. Some will expire sooner than others. The shortest term is the at-large position. And move forward from there and
And I haven't staggered, so.
It'll be staggered position so we don't lose everybody at the same time. And that would be my recommendation.
At this point, we actually don't have a committee because they've all expired.
The last one expired.
Yeah, actually, they haven't all expired because, no, Tim was appointed on.
He expired on June 30.
They all, yeah, I thought everybody expired on June 30th of 2022.
Tim didn't was.
Inspired probably.
He was.
Beginning of this year. But then.
I guess it doesn't matter.
It doesn't really matter because that's what we're trying to get by. We can find what that means.
Yes.
Go for it.
Okay. I moved to prove zone one, Paul Burnett, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through 6, 30, 20, 25. Zone two, Tim Jones, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through 6, 30, 20, 25. Zone three, Kent Anderson, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through June 30th, 20, 24. Zone four, Eric Harrison, effective 10, 19, 20, 24. And at large, Frank Bentoncourt, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through June 30th, 20, 23.
The second.
So moved and seconded that we approve zone one, Paul Burnett, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through 6, 30, 20, 25. Zone two, Tim Jones, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through 6, 30, 20, 25. Zone three, Kent Anderson, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through 6, 30, 20, 24. Zone four, Eric Harrison, effective 10, 19, 20, 22. I think this should be through 10 through 6, 30, 20, 24. And at large, Frank Bentoncourt, effective 10, 19, 20, 22 through 6, 30, 20, 23. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so Jolie, if you randomly have for you a template that actually is a letter that goes out to all the folks who have been appointed and then the one who was not, just letting them know. And so if you can work with Miranda and probably Pat to sign those, then those can get mailed out. So folks know they've been reappointed. And okay, let's move on. We are going into 5.5, which we added at the beginning. And this is discussion of the weed board, sort of agreement with SWCD or some other.
I mean, we have it in place. I attended their board meeting last week. And since we're going through the process of establishing a good document with the road advisory committee, I think it would be good to and have some agreement from Les.
I don't agree with Les on our public law, meeting law problem.
To initiate a document that would detail the agreement between us and the Southern Water Conservation District as our weed advisory committee. And everything's kind of in place other than the document. We couldn't find anything that's ever been there. So it must have been some sort of a verbal move in history.
Imagine that.
And probably an IGA, I guess, Liz would be what we want to do.
I am guessing that's what Lori is.
I mean, it's a separate, it's really going to be a separate committee other than the board because the committee is asked to not have employees from the weed department on that committee.
Right.
So it isn't exactly the board. So I mean, it's a separate committee and yet most of the members are part of that. Well, it'll be the balance of the of the board will be on the road or the weed advisory committee.
So I'm guessing what Lori may tell us is that we would do a similar resolution. And we may be able to actually just name who the board members are by saying SWCD or members who are not.
That we might want to get, we want to get their length of term as board members with SWCD to include in the resolution for their terms on the weed advisory.
We'll have Lori get into that, I think.
Because there's board members that are also elected cabinet officials.
Yes, there are. One question that will come up is how much authority the board, the advisory board should have? And so that might be.
I think that needs to have mayor over going to those ways.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, we will. Okay, we will circle back with Lori and then we'll have her draft something. And work with her to make sure that his folks are comfortable with it and bring it back for more discussion. Okay, let's move on to six point one. Which is consider approval of road department equipment purchase. This you Pat?
Yeah, who is not available today. And we've been leasing an activator and the old excavators and. Beginning to get expensive. You see in your packet that the pricing and the approval for this includes. A discount of nearly fifty thousand dollars from Sourcewell, discount of fifteen percent, and it's also include the rental credit of sixty thousand. So it's you capture back a rental in the purchasing machine. And get the source scale discount, so I'm in favor of moving forward with this purchase.
And just for the record, Sourcewell is a public procurement, which is why we don't have to have three bids. That's already gone through the state and so that is why there's only one bid in the packet is that that. Procurement process already occurred between Sourcewell and the state of Oregon.
And also there's plenty of money in the budget.
Yes. Questions, I have a question, we have a motion?
I move to accept the bid to purchase the. Three twenty three cat excavator from Western States, the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty. Seven, one thousand, one hundred and seventy six thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty two cents with the funds to come from the general road equipment replacement.
And I second. Then moved and seconded that we accept the bid to purchase the three twenty three cat excavator from Western States, the amount of. One hundred and seventy six thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars and sixty two cents. The funds to come from the general equipment replacement fund, is there further discussion?
Move.
And just wanted to note as well, Miranda, if you can capture in the record that part of this is the expectation that there's a trade in of the CAT three twenty. And so that we need to say that as part of the motion that that we're agreeing to surplus that piece. And so if you can capture that, so further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, any opposed motion carries? Okay, let's go on to six point two, consider approval of Hay Canyon Road Repair Agreement. Yep, go ahead Les.
If I may interrupt, could I take the court back for just a moment to the matter of the weed board advisory committee? To that subject, is that okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, my, the reason I'm a little bit interested in this and the reason I've. Suggested to the court quite a ways back now that there needs to be a reflection in writing of the responsibility that the Soil and Water Conservation District's Board. Now has is essentially I'm seeing that as. A you, the county is at this time using the Soil and Water Conservation District Board. As the county's weed advisory committee. And I'm just suggesting that that does need to be reflected in writing if it's to continue. But more importantly, I'm thinking that the court itself needs to. Ponder a little bit here whether or not it might be more appropriate to more or less kind of reassume that responsibility and place it. Within the county's road department as an advisory committee to the, or not the road department, the weed department. As an advisory committee to the weed department, even though the weed department at this point is a one or two person situation. But I think it's really important going forward that the legal counsel and the court. And other interested parties, particularly Herb Winters and Norrie and. And and the Soil and Water Conservation District Board itself, maybe it's time to have a joint meeting of the two governing bodies and talk a little bit about this overall. Because I know there are a number of longstanding, not necessarily concerns, but a lot of. Different perspectives involved here that I think would benefit. The public having an opportunity to hear the the discussion around. And so maybe in addition to the action you've already taken of having legal counsel look at things. The court might want to well put on its table for its next meeting or two. A joint meeting between it and the and the Soil and Water Conservation District Board to talk about what the actual structure of things need to be. And with that, I'll try to be quiet, thank you.
Thanks Les. Um, okay, uh, let's go back, we're on the Hay Canyon Road Repair Agreement. Pat, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, my, my understanding is that. There's a road that continues to get washed out, it's down in the Hager, Hager River. Oh, the entity that owns the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department is on their property and everybody's in agreement to move the road to make it safer. It is at a cost of a hundred and forty two thousand, five hundred and eighty four dollars to the county in our room department budget. Scope of the work is in there, but there were several places moving the road was gonna be the best option. Away from the bank. And that's kind of what I know about that.
That looks like they have a busy beaver that's creating some.
Not interrupting things in the waterway makes part of the. Issue a little more.
Yeah. So it looks like the agreement that is before us then has Oregon State Parks agreeing to remove the fencing. And do the assessment work prior to any reconstruction. And then the county would then be agreeing to do the excavation, reshaping and regraveling of the road.
And receiving.
And so that's why there's an actual agreement is it's laying out. What we would be doing, what we're responsible for and what Oregon Parks and Rec is responsible for. Questions about. This piece?
I don't have any questions, I think in the long run it's.
It's kind of like we have to do it.
Yeah, well, you know, it's ongoing. Concerns and and time and trouble to fix it every time. Oh, definitely, yeah.
Ultimately, sometimes moving it is a lot cheaper than patching it over and over.
Continuing to maintain it that way now.
Especially if the beaver is involved, I feel like that.
Continue to go back to the same problem, it's not very productive.
Yeah.
So I moved to approve the land use agreement for Hay Canyon Road Repair with State of Oregon Parks and Recreation Department as presented.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we approved the land use agreement for Hay Canyon Road Repair, which the State of Oregon Parks and Recreation Department has presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, any opposed motion carries? Okay, six point three, discuss appointment of Red Zone Enterprise as zone manager. And so just to bring folks up to speed, that when we formally created the Red Zone in twenty twenty one. Uh, which for those who are unfamiliar, Red Zone is to encourage energy development in rural areas, it's a special tax abatement. Um, that we approved back in twenty twenty one. Uh, in it, in the actual resolution, we designated Lisa Atkins, who was the chief of staff at the time, as the manager of that program. Basically to receive and process applications for the program. And then for consistency, we also appointed her as the enterprise zone manager for the county. And since she is no longer an employee, we need to figure out who is going to manage both of those programs. And because they were both maybe a resolution, we're still awaiting advice from legal counsel on. How that appointment needs to happen, if we actually need a new resolution or if the court can just make a regular appointment. And so really what I'm looking for today is just to get a consensus from the court on who the manager should be. And then once we hear your back from legal counsel, we'll either be bringing back resolution or we'll be bringing back something to just make the motion to formalize it. So. Not from the manager.
Well, I think the idea when we appointed Lisa in the beginning was to have someone within the county staff. As opposed to one of the commissioners or the judge to to handle that because of the, what you're saying, the. Applications that come in and need to be finalized with more of a.
And that's right, yeah.
That's down. So. Which one of you two doesn't have, actually, I don't think it's a heavy lift at this point in time.
Well, I don't think it is in regard to Red Zone, I'm unclear and I'm. Still looking into our enterprise zone situation in Mason, Arlington and. What part of that, I'm confused on what part of that falls under the enterprise zone and we may get into some. More extensive work in that area soon. But I don't know that there's a lot of work for. Manager in regards to even that, it's gonna come down to a lot of the. Enterprise zone negotiations because of how those are set up or red zone negotiations have to come. For the court where we make those decisions anyway.
True. So one of. Oh, go ahead.
Is there a chance to link that to a position rather than a name of specific person?
We did reach out, I, part of my request to legal counsel was to ask if it could just be the county judge for his or her designate me, so that way we don't have to constantly change. The resolution every time if a staff change happens or somebody else would be appointed, just to see if that wording is appropriate, but I haven't heard back from her.
My recollection is we wanted, in fact, I think that's how we proposed it in the first. Draft and then legal came back and said we had to designate, so we could find out, you know, this, that might. This is a different attorney, they may have a different tape, so we can wait and see what that is.
I think you're right about that.
I would be willing to help out.
Both of them, we'll put one on one and one on the other. Michelle, do you have anything to add to the enterprise zone, do you have any specific? Knowledge of that?
No, now that the county has adopted the two zones, I think Commissioner Shannon has made a valid concern, I don't know how they overlap and how they work currently. And how that works because I'm assuming you can only use one tax abatement, so we would have to try to figure that out. And I do know that Enterprise Zone has a expiration date, I don't think the Red Zone does, that's more of a monetary. Right, um, function and they have it, so.
And the enterprise zone expires June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three.
Of course. Of course it does.
And also in the middle of all this, when you get into such agreements, those are agreements that can fall outside of enterprise zones and red zones.
Yeah, all of our agreements right now are outside of both of those. And okay, so. What I'm hearing is that in general, there may be a preference to have one of the county court staff members be designated. Um. Maybe what we could do, so there's flexibility, because the one thing that we have encountered from time to time, hopefully these two stay and we have. Builds. There's round the clock, but one of the things I would like is if somebody, if one of them decides to move on, I would like the other, it to default to the other person. There you go. So that there's always somebody, usually we always have at least one staff member. Um, so we can maybe work with legal counsel to see if there's a way to designate an alternative, the first one isn't available, does that sound like a workable thing?
Did you have any other input on that, Jen?
Well, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some GIS involved in designating those areas. So, you know, you'll need to use some expertise in that regard, maybe you're ready to handle that.
Yeah, the, the enterprise zone, I think is the one that's geographically, Red Zone is county wide, yeah, so. Um, but yeah, that's a, and that we'd have to go, I haven't even looked at when they designated the first time, what's an enterprise zone and.
So the county has had the initial appointment and then we re-upped and we were allowed to do it again and we were granted it through the Oregon business. And there is an opportunity for the county to reapply again. And there will be a work session coming up at the, towards the end of this calendar year.
Didn't you kind of communicate to me that there might be some concerns on. Whether they would renew or not renew based on the fact we haven't done anything with it?
Correct. Yeah, what, yeah, those will be factors from Business Oregon and also. How many other jurisdictions may be interested that don't have an enterprise zone? But again, that, this is all under Business Oregon and I know Enterprise Zone along with the GIS, which now today. Um, we have that capability in the past, we didn't, and so it's a very vague where those boundaries are. And so I think we have the technology today to the board and to find that better. And I know it involves, and I think Catherine, the city of Condon, because she's on, can also speak to it, it involves the other jurisdictions. So unlike the Red Zone, that's county and it only really involves the county for approval. But because the enterprise zone has incorporated City of Arlington, the city of Condon, and there's been some other jurisdictions areas as well because they have to be. It can't be so far apart, so.
And I know that in Yumitilla County, Yumitilla County and the city of Hermison have been very involved in. Um, negotiating abatement within an enterprise zone that they're going to part of.
Right, and and we have a court here too, registered, so that, all that factors in and I know that there has to be, I don't know if it's a resolution or. An ordinance, but these other jurisdictions have to sign on and participate. They've, they've all done it in the past, and so I don't think that would be an issue, but it would just be contacting. Um, Arc Fish with the Oregon business and find out what the specifics are to move forward to reapply.
Okay. So we will put that on our agenda to work on and that may also be an agenda item for when we do our joint. Meetings with all of the, all of the districts.
We want to not wait till the last minute with the expiration on.
Okay, we'll get working on that, Lenny's taking a note, so that will. Land on her list and we will bring back either a resolution or whatever our. Legal counsel thinks is appropriate on getting managers designated for our both programs. One thing I wanted to note, since we are briefly on or touching the subject of energy is. Department of Energy, Oregon Department of Energy right now is looking at. Another amendment from Monteg, I just wanted to flag for you all. This is for the Oregon Trail, proposed Oregon Trail installation, which is likely going to be a solar project, I think. And although it's permitted right now for wind or solar. Um, one of the things, uh, sometimes we weigh in on this. I think Department of Energy is interested in hearing from us on. How we feel Monteg two winds, if there's anything they should be looking at in this particular amendment. Um, one of the things that we have been kicking around internally, so in order for. This is really convoluted for people who aren't onto planning and all of this, but in order for. Uh, ODO, Department of Energy, to approve. Say solar being built on exclusive farm units, there are certain conditions that have to be met. And one of the arguments that Abingrad has made is that. There is not a substantial impact on agriculture. By placing the solar panels where they are. Which I think there are some people locally who may disagree.
Maybe.
Um, with that. And so one of the things we have been kicking around internally is what it might look like. Assuming that likely they will use a red zone or ask to apply for a red zone again for this particular project. Um, is whether they might consider as part of, and ODO could potentially. Put this into their requirements in order to build is that. They may be required to provide funding and what we are kicking around is possibly to SWCD. For things like the storage waters, uh, storage project that we've been talking about, other things that would enhance agricultural production in. Other parts of the county as a way to offset the land that is coming out of agricultural production, offset the store. That makes sense, so like, you know, I think Monteg two is what, twelve hundred? How many hundreds of acres? Sixteen hundred, so the idea would be that there's, you know. Based on the number of acreage that's coming out of farm production, there would be a certain dollar figure that then would probably come to us as the county that. Probably be passed through to the. As the county that probably be passed through to the the appropriate party, that then would be working with uh farmers and ranchers. Who have land and production for things like. You know, water uh issues, things like that, that help make those lands that are still existing more productive. And I wanted to run this by you because comments are due back to ODO by Friday. And so this was something that you guys thought, I'm happy to write a letter underneath my name, um. But I didn't want it to be speaking out of turn if that was not something that we wanted them to even consider. Um, and so that is one of them. The other one that they were curious about, which I would be curious on your feedback is. Uh, they have to show to ODO uh. Economic impact, local economic impact from construction and uh from having the facility there. And so um. Correct me if I am wrong, but my perception on Monteg two was that um. We have not felt as much impact as we would have liked, um because their folks are not. Staying here, right? They're not eating here. They're not.
I would absolutely agree with you and I have lots of my complaint with their developer. That um that is absolutely the case, and I guess we have to take part of the fault in that because we don't have the housing available to hold them, but um. There has not been the effort. This is my experience is there has not been the effort to um. To spend within the county that there was during Montag one with the different general, and I really think it's around the problem with the general. But it is a problem.
So the two things that we can, and maybe ways to approach it is when. In Avangrid did this as well, when they were coming to talk to us about the red zone, is they. Base local impact with a hundred mile radius, which is ridiculous, um. Because that literally is touching Multnomah County from here. Um, so having. Us give a huge tax abatement so that Multnomah County can have people. And up and down the gorge staying in hotel rooms and eating in their restaurants does not equal economic impact for our taxpayers. And business owners here. So that is one thing we can ask and ODO could potentially say that they need to see data specific to ours. Codes on local spending, uh which may hold them accountable. The other thing that we could ask is that they. Find other ways to contribute with some of these other projects that we're doing. We're looking at housing projects. We're looking at childcare projects. Maybe there's an ask on that piece that they actually contribute in some way to those things to substantiate. Community impact.
Which is probably, I mean, when you, when you talk about the company involved in this, they are here permanently. And that would be a good push. Uh along those lines. I mean, they get a benefit out of that also. Uh becoming somebody that's a good partner with the county and. It's not like they're in and out of the construction project and gone. They are here.
Correct. So if you guys feel comfortable, um because it's on such tight turnaround and we will obviously not meet again before Friday. If you feel comfortable with me capturing this and sending it on behalf of the court, I will sign it as me. Um, or if you want me to send it to you guys and you can each sign, that's fine too.
Because you're all good. Pieces to put in the puzzle.
Okay.
My other concern that I'm not sure how it's addressed with. The. Wind farm that or the solar farm that is now being constructed, which my understanding is it's way past. It's deadline is. What is their long-term weed control? Plan and is that where, where is that in our agreements with them and with. Both DOE and land their um stewardship with. A joint landowners and the county itself, because right now the weed abatement. At that solar project is atrocious.
So two things, one in the, in the new one, that it's definitely can be part of the. The permitting process through the state. Um, to make sure that that's a requirement on the existing one. I suspect it's already in there and maybe they're just out of compliance. Um, and so, but that is useful to pass along to their regulator, which is ODO, um so.
Yeah, I'm sure it's in there.
I would hope so, but they certainly aren't giving any attention to.
Yeah. So we, I can pass that along as well to ODO staff that we have concerns about the existing one and we can. Probably put some language in the letter saying that we have concerns based on what we're seeing in um Monteg two, that it's not being addressed and really needs to be.
Thank you.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, we will, I will get that sent off then this week. Um, okay, let's move on. Uh, next one is consider approval of Gillon County, um should be sort of consider appointment. Of Gillon County Planning Commission Member. Um, Lenny or Michelle, do you, which one of you wants to take this one? Um, so I worked with Michelle to advertise for the vacancy. There was uh we, the court members, I think it was back. I have been Jill, June, May, sometime, we received notification from Derek Kaiser that he was giving up his spot on the planning commission. And advertised a vacancy since. Um, we finally heard back from two interested applicants. Um, and then on Monday, Michelle, or Tuesday, actually it was yesterday, um Michelle informed that Wade Johnson is also. Not going to be renewing his term and his term becomes open in. Um, January one, since it expires at the end of this year, so we wanted to present to you guys the option since we do have two interested. Members to see if we would potentially want to put both of them on the planning commission, one effective now and then one at the end of Wade's term.
So did I see, and I cannot find it now, and I've looked and looked. A list of members and said all their terms, all the other three expire. The end of the year.
This, that was what spurred her to reach out, because Wade is the only one.
I think Martin's up next.
Martin's up, right? The end of twenty-three, Jeff Schott's term expires twelve thirty-one of two thousand four, as does Gib Wilton's. Twenty-four, yeah. So we have a year and then two years for the others. And then um. One of these would be twenty-four and one would be twenty-seven.
I see it though.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, it I, it's so hard to recruit and this particular committee. A commission is a heavy lift. This is not your regular. So the fact that we have two people who are saying, I'm willing to take on planning, um, it, I think we should. Say yes.
Well, I was, I was going to propose that we add them both, because at this point, we actually only had. Um, six. Five, we have five. We only have five and we can have up to seven, so this.
Have to have five.
Have to have five, but we have up to seven, so I think, yeah, we need to.
Yeah, and I, I had a talk with Rourke last night about he thought maybe we should wait and see if there's any other interest. But I think it's an insult to applicant to ask.
Oh, I think so too.
Um, willing to serve now and I'm in favor of putting both of them on immediately.
They're both good candidates. I, I don't see why we would need to reach out. We've reached out.
That's who's, that's who's interested today.
That's right.
So, Michelle, would it be preferable to wait to have one of them be effective? In January one, just to keep with the term, so we don't then also.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, we need to go with the true.
Yeah.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
So do we have an ongoing search out there to fill more than that or we're just happy with five?
So the county court had made a decision to do have at the ba- the minimum of five. The county court can elect to go up to seven or nine. It's a decision up to the county court and so historically. The last twenty years or more, it's been a five-member board. Um, we know it's very hard to recruit for the specific board. And many other boards that the county court appoints individuals. Um, so the five has been where the board has sat at for the county court.
Well, and to me as well, the other challenge is we start saying seven, quorum gets up.
Yeah.
And so if you've got a vacancy and then you have somebody missing, you don't have a quorum to operate and. Then you're, yeah.
Then you're in trouble.
Then you're in trouble. Um, so. It sounds like we're in agreement. Which one would you like to appoint? I will say um for the balance of, it's nice that we have a north and a south. Um, that helps maintain some of the balance on the planning commission. Um. Do you guys have a preference on who's appointed immediately and who's appointed in January?
So the, the um. Position that is on the. I didn't brief him first. Is that for a north or a south?
That would have been the one.
And then Wade's would be north.
So, yeah, I. Same result as far as I'm concerned. I think we should appoint Tina. Um, I moved to appoint Tina Potter to the Gillon County Planning Commission effective October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Through twelve thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-four.
And I will second. So moved and seconded that we appoint Tina Potter to the Gillon County Planning Commission effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two through. Uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so further discussion. All those in favor?
I.
I, I, any opposed? Motion carries. And then do you guys want to go ahead and do Aaron for uh January one?
Yeah, I moved to appoint Aaron Hyden to the Gillon County Planning Commission effective one-one of two thousand and twenty-three through. Twelve thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second, then moved and seconded that we appoint Aaron Hyden to Don County Planning Commission effective. One-one twenty-twenty-three through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, if there's further discussion. All those in favor?
Alright.
I, I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to six point five, uh consider approval of amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operational support grant. And fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital investment grant for Arlington School District. I will pick this up if you want me to, Larry, and then maybe you can um fill in. Um, so Larry, who is our new uh school superintendent here in Arlington, reached out regarding the district's. Uh operational and capital investment grants for this existing uh fiscal year. Um, basically both projects uh are coming in under budget, so the operational support is for the college program. They had some carryover from the previous fiscal year of about ten thousand, um and so. And then their capital projects is also um under budget and so their request is uh if they can. Reallocate some of those funds for additional uh district use. Um, specifically under the operational support grants, uh the request would be for up to forty-five hundred for outdoor school and. An additional up to forty-five hundred for the vocational program. For the capital investment grants, it would be up to twenty thousand dollars for uh new computer equipment. And then up to twenty-five thousand dollars for maintenance of the baseball fields and purchase of new maintenance equipment. I will say for the record that we always love it when our people do the right thing and come ask first. Before they just spend the money willy-nilly on whatever they like. So we appreciate you reaching out and asking how to handle it, um before uh you were out of compliance with your grant agreement, because that gets a little stickier. So, that is the request. Did I capture that?
Yes. And I, I'm trying to learn uh that I knew. Some issues that, you know, change uh from the absolute administration to now that need to be addressed. And we do have some extra monies and we'd like to reallocate it for current uh issues that we're facing. So, understand.
Yeah.
We're very, very fortunate at our school to work in the county. I come from Spray, which is in Wheeler County, and we had a jar where. People put nickels and dimes in to save for projects and and we can't think that the county enough to partner with us to make. Our facilities uh the best they can be for the community use uh for students. I am proud on uh first November. Thanks to the county working with us to to make those facilities open and operate so well. Well, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion. I moved to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operational support grant award. To Arlington School District by allowing for up to nine thousand dollars to be used for outdoor school and the vocational program. And to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operational support. Grant award to Arlington School District by allowing for up to nine thousand dollars to be used for outdoor school. And a vocational program and to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same, if there's further discussion. All those in favor?
I.
I, I, any opposed? Motion carries.
And I moved to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital investment grant award. Arlington School District by allowing up to forty-five thousand dollars to be used for upgrades to computers. Maintenance of the baseball field and purchase of new maintenance equipment. And to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital investment grant awards to Arlington School District. By allowing for up to forty-five thousand dollars to be used for upgrades to computers, maintenance of the baseball field and purchase of new maintenance equipment. And to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute an amended grant agreement reflecting the same. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will get amended grant agreement over to you. While you're here, do you want to talk to the court a little bit about? Housing and anything else that you're interested in?
Yeah, I, I had the opportunity to meet commissioners and. Have some of their time to talk about some of my vision and goals that I've shared with the board. And there's no secret that there's housing issues all over.
Yeah.
And that I, I feel bad for everyone else, but this is about my school and so it's important to me that we take care of our, our issues. We have about six teachers that are nearing the end of their uh educational. Longevity and and they're looking at doing other things. And so if we have to replace those in the next few years. Here's what happened this year. We needed a fifth grade teacher and just so happened the person applied at the Dallas and they applied at Arlington. And the principal at the Dallas said, we'd love to have you here, um but you don't have a house and you don't have to commute. Uh, she came out and interviewed with us and just so happened that a partner opened up. That we, we were able to offer her the contract and fill the position and get her into a house, so. Uh, it's critical, at least in my eyes, and talking to others with tenants in the region, we're facing the same issues. I like to be ahead of the curve here when I'm looking at this many teachers in the next few years that will be uh moving uh on to other things and. There won't be additional houses available. If there are, I know attracting a new teacher, pay three hundred thousand or more for a house, it's just not. Uh, that seems uh feasible. Anyway, so we're looking at the possibility of uh. Either building and the cost came in extremely high, both a million dollars to to build a duplex on a property. But we're looking at the possibility of maybe buying a duplex to start that process to offer some housing when I go to interviews. Uh candidates say, hey, you know, we have the best healthcare in the region for benefits. We have. Uh, salaries or commiserate with anyone else around here and we have affordable housing. I mean, I want to compete against Condon. At Hermiston, you, so we, we have a package that is really attractive and so we have good people, because if we don't, we don't have school. You know, if we have six people retire in the next few years. We can't find people to place, what do we have as a school? And everyone is important, but I think we measure. The vitality of the community through schools and we're very fortunate to have a great school facility. And now we just got to make sure that we replace the people that we do have. We have a great staff come up there and you, you know my staff, they're. They, they're dedicated, hardworking people uh that want to do the best for kids. And so I want to replace those teachers with good candidates. And so if we have housing to be available, I think we'll be ahead of the game in offering those candidates a position. So, it's important uh for our community to uh in the long term to invest in housing. Now, I pulled, uh I'm new, so I pulled a lot of people and asked them. I've had a couple of people say, well, there's going to be people moving out. There's going to be housing available and I, I. And I, I don't know the history here. I know that people come in and they move out. They come in and move out. But I, we all know how tough it's been the last few years, you know, to offer housing. So I don't, I can't predict the future, which we all could, but I don't see it as a lose, lose situation. If we do. Purchase these places, we know we're going to have them at least rented. And as. They don't normally lose much value. And and I don't want to get in the business of changing light bulbs or fixing toilets and things. I will hire a management company to oversee the maintenance and operation of. Of these. And our first priority is teachers. And then we, we work with waste management or whoever. To say that we have these facilities available and we can keep them rented on a year-to-year basis. And if we need a teacher, then we just have to make that adjustment with the teacher in there. Anyway, I think it's, it's a critical investment in the future uh of our school. So that's what I'm looking at. And we'll be hearing you talk more about that in upcoming months.
There might be some discussion because I know our repair projects winding down. And within the next thirty days, we'll see a lot of. Current rentals will probably open up. But we also have. The solar farm is going to continue probably in the spring and just, you know, and how long, and maybe the next one starts trying to behind it that. Hopefully we fill those positions and not go out of county to spend the money. But so I don't know, but with. Waste management situation with the amount of employees they have that live outside of county, I would get, I would be really surprised that we end up with a. Influx and a lot of rentals.
A lot of open, yeah.
You know, in the long run and.
Well, like you say.
The one thing I told you the other day, I did, and you two don't necessarily know, but the. One, the duplex that he's looking at purchasing is probably under a little bit of competition because we've also reached out to CCS for the silver living place and that. Really good spot to then too. So that's going to be who gets there first, I believe. They do have funding for it.
Right. And I understand. But anyway, that, that's, that's my, my number one goal. I have two other goals that uh that uh I can share later on, but uh. Uh we want to, we want to make sure that we have, uh we have students that are square pages around holes. They don't always fit into the mold of a regular high school. I've got background of an alternative high school principal. I don't like to lose, lose kids uh that they don't fit in. So hopefully down the road, we can find a. A program that will not only attract our, our kids here, but uh I've talked to the superintendent out of the area here. They said. We, we have students that we'd love to send if that program was up and running. So, you know, uh we all know that. One size is a pit off for kids and and uh having an extra program that be more flexible to their needs. Uh I'd like to see something like that in work. So I'm working on that. So anyway, uh you're all welcome to come to our, our school anytime. As you know, uh it's a beautiful facility. We're proud of it. And our staff. So thank you. We'll get on this. And I've got to go to a recess duty. And one of the reasons I put in here, we have kids now coming up. They look like a Velcro strip with all those little burrs. They're on our playground. So. They, so we're, we're going to get on this uh issue to make sure. And then our baseball field up there. I'm learning a lot about the history of it, but right now uh it's a priority. It used to be green. It used to practice. Now it looks like a weed patch.
Well, that's why your playground has weed because your adjacent baseball field has been a bad neighbor.
I don't like it.
I don't like it either. I call around on my hands and knees and dig those burrs out of my ground.
Yeah, well, we get, I get them, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
Down the side of them, they got all these birds up the.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, so we're going to, we're going to do some good things with that. So I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get you amended grant agreements this week uh to sign. Um, and then uh the other thing I wanted to note for you is we are still planning on doing joint meeting, a joint meeting in November with the court. And we're also inviting the other uh districts. And so I think it would be great if you want to go.
That will be in the.
I know it'll be here.
Okay.
And it is November twenty-second. Yeah, I think you already have it on your list. Yeah. So that, I think that would be great to talk about.
I'm learning a lot from the people here in, in this room. And again, I thank you for being patient with me as a new person in your community, but. Everybody's been very welcoming. So thank you.
Appreciate your enthusiasm.
Yeah, I love it. I love the new energy coming in and, and new ideas. That it's.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I, I got to say a couple of things. One, uh I moved from Washington to come down here. Arlington, Washington, to Arlington, Oregon. Anyway, I, I, I sure enjoy that. I, I'm so blessed. I look out in the evening out of my place. I see the Columbia River. And I tell this story. I came here for three reasons. One was I want to be North Central Oregon. Number two, I wanted to be uh. Uh near water. And some people are describing the United States. Number three, I want a cool mascot. And I looked up honkers. And there's three things about a honker. One, they're intelligent and resourceful. They live from Arctic Circle all over North America. Number two. Um, they're fierce. And I learned this when I was a kid. They put their wings out and went out and bit me. So. And number three is we all know they're loyal. And so I told my kids that. And in fact, I go into a classroom every once in a while. I said, okay, what, what about honker? We're, we're intelligent, fierce and loyal. So I have a lot of fun with that. So anyway, well, I gotta go and do lunchroom duty, so.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, it's great to see you. Yeah, thank you. All right, let's move into six point six. Consider approval of requests for small business grant program funding for family slash home-based childcare startup from Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce. This is sort of a joint, I think, from Delaney and Kellen, which one of you even wants to?
You want to go? I'll take that in a second.
Okay.
With the Wonder.
Sure. So um as part of the Rocket Initiative that Judge, for our Campbell and I participated in, um we split into two groups. One was a workforce pipeline dedicated to finding additional resources to support our current workforce. And then the other group was for home-based slash family care centers. And that was the group that I participated in. Um as part of that, we researched ways to uh increase possible, find possible providers, train resources, funding, licensing requirements. Uh and such. And out of the blue, we were able to meet with a place called Wonder School. They currently partner with the state of Oregon on several other projects, including a shared services model that they are. Piloting in the um Sun Valley area currently. Um but their biggest thing that they do at Wonder School is they help create an influx of family and home-based care centers. Their support system for it. If you were able to review the proposal, they offer training, su- support. They offer an accounting system for home-based providers. And. They have seen a great increase in the places that they've been able to currently work. And so my hope is that today we can um get funding for two slots. One, that would be for an Arlington home base and one would be for a Condon home base. Um to allow them the opportunity to partner with Wonder School. And that's, those slots would be awarded in partnership with the Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce Small Business Grant Program.
Great. Which is the Gillum County Small Business Grant Program. Through this uh Rocket Initiative, we've really learned about changing the narrative behind childcare. Uh right now, people consider themselves babysitters. Where if we can change that narrative, where you can run a successful home-based childcare business, you can impact the lives of youth, you know, zero to twelve. In a, in a way that isn't just watching over someone's children. Uh we realize that we need to give them the tools to be able to have those, those things within their space where they are um offering their services. So today's uh request is kind of too full, wanting to come in, uh give you an update on the Gillum uh County Small Business Grant Program, which is going really well. But also uh create a subcategory of the program, which specifically calls out home-based childcare business as a grant opportunity. Uh again, changing that narrative, sometimes people will, will say, well, we have a grant program. Well, I'm not running a business. Yes, you are. This is a legitimate business. And, and getting them trained on what is a legitimate business. And so Delaney and I and partners. Um from around the region are going to host a kind of a resource fair for people that are looking into. Uh creating a home-based childcare business where they can come in, they can speak with partners at Columbia Gorge Community College Childcare Initiatives. They can work with the uh state of Oregon, excuse me, business, uh Business Oregon, as well as anyone. The chamber will be there as well to help educate on the opportunities and the services that are available to help get them started. And that's what we're seeing is people may know how to start a business, but what happens a year later? You know, do they know about filing for taxes? And, you know, were they a registered business? Or, you know. I think also right now there's this education piece of people think it's really difficult to become a home-based childcare provider, but it's actually not. Um and so this, this opportunity to really get out there, the county's leading the charge, just like you are in so many. Fronts. And this is just another way where we can make an even greater impact. And so. My hope was that we could create a subcategory, whether you uh decide to pass on those additional fundings from the Wonder School. So it would be no additional funding. We just create a subcategory with the already established grant program, which specifically calls out childcare and new business entrepreneurship support. And or if the court sees value in allowing us to distribute those Wonder School funds to both north and south. Uh Gillum County businesses, we would love to have those additional funds uh to be able to just foster this.
And they would be part of, they would submit their application to the chamber for the grant. And then they, they would be reviewed. Um and they would be selected through a selection committee. And we would include um Nancy Patton with Childcare Partners. She's our Columbia Gorge representative, who has been fantastic to work with. And will be the main point of contact for these home-based care centers. Um and in that selection process. So that way she can help look at the applicants we have and help us pick two that she thinks would be the most successful with those additional support.
So I think I understand. To clarify for me, we're talking forty-two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Thousand dollars program. That goes to Wonder Care?
Yes, so one.
So we, even if we pass it through the chamber, and the chamber is really a screening process, and we're just going to get that. And then they would get the benefits of.
Yeah.
Of Wonder School to.
Yeah. Two things uh I want to just add to the record. One, I think this uh this piece is. What this subgroup was looking at is sort of the whole universe of what's available. And so this is one of those tools. You know, Kellen had mentioned like Business Oregon, Columbia Gorge has a great small business development center that has great resources as well. And so one of the things that we have done, and I would. If the court decides to fund this, would ask the chamber to incorporate, is just an expectation that whoever is the applicant or recipient of this. Needs to. Grab all of those other resources as well. Um because there's a lot of good resources at Columbia Gorge Community College in particular. That I just don't, we want to make sure that whoever receives this investment. Definitely is going to be successful. And so I just don't want them to leave any stone unturned. Um and then the other piece I just want to put on the record for the court's identification and for the public so that. Folks can sort of see the bigger picture here is that we are working on center-based care as well. But what we are finding and what folks need to understand is there needs to be an entire ecosystem that we built. Um so if you happen to be somebody who needs to work, say, after five-thirty. And you need somebody to provide care, this is where maybe a home-based person might come in. Our centers right now have trouble uh accommodating infant and toddlers. And so maybe having somebody who's willing to take on even one or two children actually. Would really alleviate some of the wait lists that we have. Um and so the whole idea, you know, somebody's, your kiddo's sick. Um it can't be in the center. Maybe you have somebody in the community that's willing to watch. And so this is part of that larger ecosystem. So folks need to understand, like, I'm going to be coming back. Pat has been on multiple meetings with me where every time I'm at a meeting, I am raising childcare. And there's a reason for this, like we are hitting crisis points. And every time we have an opportunity, we, I feel like the county has got to take the lead on investing and getting. Better care for our families. Um because it's. All the other stuff that we're working on, um this is going to start being a pinch point where families are like, I can't move here because I don't have a place for my kid to go that safe. Um so I, I, I just feel like we can maybe even lead the state on how to do this well. Um so.
I have a couple of questions. And on your ask, you said that in two different ways.
I know, I might, I might confuse you.
So what happens to the forty-two thousand like for initial?
So what we're asking for is the forty-two thousand dollars would be just for these Wonder School lots. And so that would go towards. Purchasing a slot for an Arlington Center. And tho- those ones would go to. The chamber to purchase that with Wonder School. Like it wouldn't be, and that, if this doesn't get approved.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And then it makes sense, but it's, you confused me with the first part of what you said that it's going to the other grant program. Let's think of why.
Uh just so we're not recreating the wheel. So that again, folks know that uh.
So do they get something different for that than they would with this?
Well, they could in addition. So this would be, let's say they also wanted to ask for supplies. Or funds like that, because this would allow them to also ask for some seed money for supplies in there. And then we would also on top of their small business grant, the, but through them. And at, give them the slot on top of.
Yeah, I would think they would be. The two separate things, but one entity could be available for both.
Yeah.
Yeah. Look at that. Because that, the other part of their ask would be, would fall under the small business startup or whatever it is.
Yeah.
That would, you know, the um. Other thing that I would have a concern about, when somebody comes in and they're going to get. Twenty-one thousand dollars benefit for Wonder School, how many kids are we going to talk about? We wouldn't want that to go to somebody that's going to be one or two. If you've got somebody that's. That would need to be part of the screening process on, and maybe some requirements and. Where you're at to meet that grant on what are you really going to provide for the county that's going to be a. This is what you're going to take the.
And it could be that we get them started with running a, a, a business for the next six months. And we see, you know, who's really performing, who has. You know, steady children after school or, you know, what is the service that they're providing? And then reassess the program in which.
My only hesitation with that is the Wonder School app, the Wonder School system offers them that support for accounting. And checking in and checking out of kids. So it's really something, if they get established for those first six months. And then we come in and we try to get them to reinvent the wheel necessarily with how they're checking in, in, and keeping track of their accounting and stuff like that. It might be not as. Beneficial to them as it would be at the start because they can be run from your phone. So the minute a parent drops off their kid, they can check it on their phone that the kid is in attendance. And then they can email out bills and invoicing. That's one of the bigger benefits to this, in addition to their trainings and things like that that they offer, is that accounting system that is easy to use for those family and home-based care centers.
But, but that's my point. I would want to see that asset wasted on somebody that's in daycare.
And that can be part of when they have to apply, it has to say like what their target eight kids would be. Because also the thing with home-based care is. The licensing for the number of slots you can have is dependent on the ages that you fill. So if you have one infant in there. You can only have, I think, like seven other kids. So i- if you want to take four infants, you can only have six that aren't in, like it just. The licensing is a little bit different for those age requirements. So they can't necessarily say, I will have ten kids. If they're also going to take infants, because then they might only be able to take. Seven kids or something like that. So maybe just figure out a way to put that on the application to capture who can have the most and what age groups are interested in offering care for.
So let's, just from a general uh. Idea, does this sound like something that the court is interested in supporting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do you need additional information? So like, for instance, would it be helpful? To actually lay out the criteria that.
It would.
Okay. So it sounds like it might be helpful, Kellen, for you and Delaney to work on drafting similar to what you have for the small business grant. Where it sort of lays out who's eligible, the criteria that the committee is going to be looking at. You know, making sure that the, whoever the applicants are, are, you know, have done a. You know, session with Greg or, you know, like those kinds of things. And maybe do a draft. It sounds like in general you. Have our support, but I think we want to see details before we actually make the motion. And am I correct that you guys would like to see that before actually making a motion?
Yes.
So I think we're pretty close. We just need to kind of nail out, nail down the details so that we make sure that it. It's, we get the biggest bang for the investment.
Yeah.
Is that what we're after?
That's the concern. I make sure that we, I won't spend the money, but let's get something for it.
Great. And what about the childcare and new business entrepreneurship startup support? Are you guys okay with us adding a subcategory? In the grant pro- program with no mention of Wonder School? Uh so we can start.
Yeah, I would think that would fall under what you already have in place anyways, a startup. This is. Yeah, I would think that would fall under what you already have in place anyways, a startup. This is what, I mean, are you gonna have a subcategory for every type of business or?
No, this would just be a call out in the grant program where one is for new business entrepreneurship.
Try target it more.
What is for expansion and retention? This would be for childcare, new business entrepreneurship support. So that it just specifically if they are to go to that page, it just queues them in a way.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a way to dial them in. It's something that we really need. This would.
And especially with our community meetings that we have that the flyer was the pen for, that way we can point people specifically, cause our hope is at our community meetings, we are able to find some potential providers there that come to the meeting. And then we can direct them to the chamber so they can look at that grant and see that it's specifically applicable to them and what they can apply for with it. Um, it's our hope.
I mean, I think I'm, I, I don't see any problem with specifically calling that out.
That would be great.
No, but it's, it's, it's really what it is. It's just, you're just trying to get a target to focus, begin to focus directly.
Well, well, it would be good to know who's out there. Continue to support them.
Yeah. And that shows that, shows that the county is making significant steps in recognizing that childcare is, is an issue and that they're just supporting business starting, so.
Great. Absolutely. Okay, so um, in terms of next steps, uh, we will get this scheduled, I think, let's go ahead and, um, get it scheduled for the next meeting if we can. And then in the meantime, if the two of you can sort of rough out, uh, similar to how you have your, for your small business, um, just who would qualify, how you're gonna make the award determination, kind of those details. And, and then we can formally approve the funding, but I, I think you're there pretty close in concept. We just need to refine the details a little bit.
And I assume we're looking at funding out economically.
That would be my recommendation.
I, I think we, I've looked, our, the dollars can be used to fund this. Um, Wonder School has mentioned that they allow our dollars. Um, there's potential for some lottery funds to be used. Both the county reports and the lottery funds the county receives could be used to that or economic development funds. Those are all be helpful.
Maybe we've already kind of said we'd like to target some of the art funds towards daycare or anywhere, maybe that.
Yeah, we have lots of options.
Yeah.
Okay, um, while we have Kellen, six point seven is Oregon Frontier Chamber update. Do you wanna walk us through?
Yeah, I just thought I'd give you a kind of a chamber update. There's lots going on in terms of, you know, since we transitioned to the Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce, uh, we're now the only nationwide pilot program, which is pioneering Oregon Main Street. Our rural redevelopment approach to that, which is going really well. Sherry Stewart will, will actually be in our region on November thirtieth through December second. So I'm creating community tours, um, in each of the towns. Uh, the Oregon's Main Street goal, when we, when they approached us, uh, to partner with them was that we would have three participating communities. Meaning communities that say that they like Oregon Main Street model, they're convicted, you know, committed to being good partners to the chamber. We have eight. So that is incredible. That also means that we can make eight different applications, one in each of the communities. So I'm really excited to bring Sherry to the communities, um, throughout the region, but specifically Arlington and Condon. We'll do walk around tours. We'll meet with hopefully the city council, the mayor, and then any, uh, businesses and, and county staff that would like to, uh, be involved in that. Just attended the Oregon Main Street, uh, conference last week and won a pitch contest, which is an Imagine Your Business Here idea, which takes our vacant commercial buildings and opens the doors to people to creating a business in that space. And so it's, there's multi-levels to it, but really essentially it's about collaboration and cooperation, working with real estate agents, vacant uh, property owners, building owners to get people into their drink, community events. But more than just a for sale or for rent sign, there's a sign in the window that says Imagine Your Business Here with the Q R L code that goes to the chamber, which lists information about that business. For rent for what? Right? For sale for this? What are the building's needs? And then we have links to our opportunities, our small business grant program, Business Oregon. So we create this opportunity for them where before it felt, you know, out of reach. Uh, so I'm so excited to be able to launch this Imagine Your Business Here campaign very, very soon. And just to give you an update, we got five thousand dollars from A A R P to, to roll up the Imagine Your Business Here campaign. Uh, we've got a Co-Starter's Core Boot Camp, uh, in Condon this weekend that was funded uh, in part by the special projects, uh, funding. We have eight people that have signed up for the boot camp. This is the first ever, uh, boot camp that Co-Starter's took a look at their program, which is a ten-week, three-hours-a-week program uh, and decided that might not be working best for everyone. So they've allowed us to create a, a weekend intensive boot camp to help people take their ideas and put them into action. We did community conversations, uh, last week in all of the communities throughout the region, but had really, really good input from community members, business owners and leaders of both Condon and Arlington, which will really help drive our strategic plan, uh, the next eighteen months, uh, is what I like to say. Cause I think there's, it's hard to plan long, long term, uh, given our environment. So, uh, if you feel inclined to take that member needs, um, and community engagement survey, the more feedback we have on ways that the chamber can truly make a difference and, and a greater impact in the communities. Would love to hear from you. And then we have the childcare solutions meetings coming up in Condon and Arlington on October twenty-eighth and November fourth. Really excited about that. That's kind of it. Um, from the chamber update, the small business grant program is going very well. We're working on some specific targeted outreach to businesses that we know have needs, um. But you can pull your horse to water and there's that last bit. They have to decide, uh, to, to, you know, take that effort to apply. But feel really great about having that program. I know counties across the state are just looking at the model and, and, and the, you guys are being so proactive in supporting your communities. It's being seen in, in everywhere we're going. They're like, you have a small business grant program and it's funded by your county? Like, how does that work? Tell me more. And so I, I really hope to see this take off, um, across the state of Oregon.
So I do have a couple of questions about your spreadsheet.
Okay.
Um, because it is a small business grant program, how does the Gillum County Historical Society fall under that?
Uh, well, they are nonprofit. They're still.
So here's my argument.
Okay.
They have an avenue to get grants through the county to the other grant programs. And this should be for small business and not for nonprofit.
Nonprofit. Would you like us to take out eligibility of applicants?
I would really like to see this target. Target small businesses. I mean, that's my
Sure.
idea when I support this, that we're really targeting small business, because we have another avenue for nonprofits to go. And small businesses do not get to participate in that.
You're absolutely right. Yeah. Yeah. We can certainly, uh, if the county would like us to look at that eligibility criteria of taking off fraternal organizations and nonprofits from being eligible to apply. Um.
Then Lori Anderson's business and I'm assuming expansions upstairs in the family.
Uh, no, our building's different than hers. The Anderson building is separate from the Dunn Brothers. It is to create second-story office space.
Uh, okay, but it, and it's, it is a business.
It is a business without a doubt. And it's hard to think of nonprofits as not a business, right? Cause they are, while they are a nonprofit.
Can't, you can't access nonprofit funding.
Yes.
There's a difference, believe me.
Yeah, I think I, you know, I, I applaud their efforts to like go after anything and everything and you know, this was a, a definite need for that.
I think it's a great, I don't have a problem with the purchase.
Yeah.
For, for the Gillum County, I mean, I think that's a great purchase. I just think they could've got that through another avenue and left that funding available for small business.
That's a great, great input. I will talk to my committee and then if the court is in consensus that you would like us to take off nonprofit organizations as being eligible entities to apply. Or do we just look at their applications with a little bit thicker of a scope? Saying where else have you gone? You know, what other resources have you looked up? What would you guys like to see?
I mean, my feeling is I, to me, as long as they're not displacing small businesses who need the funds. I'm not necessarily. Yeah, but if, like, I think here's what I would say. If you have a small business and a nonprofit competing for the same dollar and all other things being equal, I would rather see that money go to the small business because the nonprofit has other sources, including county sources available to it. So that's kind of my feeling. I don't necessarily have heartburn over the, the being in the mix so long as there's enough money to go around for everybody.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I don't see a reason.
I do.
Well, I, okay, so this so that I can have my, it's time to speak. I think that any entity that is deemed eligible should be looked up and they should all get the same opportunity to apply for these grant funds. And there's plenty of money to go around.
I'm just saying they shouldn't be eligible.
Okay.
Okay.
We disagree.
Really good feedback, really good feedback. Um, and we'll just make sure that the committee is really mindful moving forward, um, with applicants and making sure that they know of other, cause you're right, nonprofits are open to
Lots of.
Lots of different things.
Small businesses, they're absolutely not eligible.
Correct. For-profit, for-profit businesses. Okay, great feedback. Thank you, guys.
Other questions, things that are coming?
There's a lot happening at the chamber.
So, and then what is the eight names? Uh, I'll start. Mitchell, Fossil Spray, Condon, Arlington, Rufus, Morrow and Wasco. Yeah, so people are saying, what about Grass Valley? And I just can't get there yet, but I'm working on it.
Um, I know you, but you just wear them down.
Few more months. Um, but it's incredible. And the resources that are coming from Oregon Main Street are incredible. Even, uh, uh, permitting for street closure, I was able to share it out of all of the cities this last week. Cause we really should have a process in place for closing down the streets and a nice, you know, template. And so there's just all of these things that I think, you know, will create efficiencies for, for our cities and resources that have we weren't eligible to have our hands on until now.
Other questions while we have Kellen?
Thank you for all your support. I will commend Mr. Johnson's sentiments with a heartfelt emotion of none of this would have ever been possible without the county court eight years ago saying, we believe in you, go for it. And then when the pandemic hit was saying, let's give people a place to go so they understand the value. And that has just, so I really appreciate you guys so much.
We're happy to help.
Yeah.
It's easy.
Appreciate.
It's easy to do that when you have somebody who's, uh, effective at running programs and getting full energy. So I think good work. Um, okay, let's move in. I think we are at the end of our agenda. So announcements and next meeting. And next meeting is November second. Uh, that will be in Condon. As a reminder, the second meeting in November will be canceled as we are at, uh, Association of Oregon Counties Annual Conference in Eugene that week. And so we are out. Um, then we, we will be coming back in December. Currently, we are, uh, anticipating bulk meetings in December, but we may maybe revisit whether we need the second meeting, given that we have a new commissioner coming on. Uh, it may make sense to just postpone until January, depending on how you guys are feeling and whether we have anything that's really, uh, urgent that needs court attention. So. Um, the other thing I wanted to just note, and before I turn it over to Sherry, is that we are reopening our competitive grants. Um, so if you are somebody who is looking for funding, speaking of funding from the county, um, our capital investment grants, uh, are opening, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow.
How long is it gonna be?
Um, until, uh, November seventeenth, uh, so about a month. Um, this is for
You open on both ends or just in one?
Capital investments is countywide. And then we are also, but to your point, reopening special projects for the North Fund only because they did not extend, uh, what's currently available in that fund. So that is also opening tomorrow. We'll close on same time, uh, November seventeenth. That, uh, for folks who are curious, uh, that would be for capital projects that are twenty thousand dollars or less. Events, et cetera. Um, and then the capital investments are for more than twenty thousand, um.
Is, is the, does Larry understand? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Worked him on figuring out those, and sent him the application document.
Yes, um, just for the court's edification, the North Special Projects balance is currently at twenty, at thirty-two thousand. And so we could fund potentially a couple of projects in the North End. If there's some interest up here. And then, um, the capital funds balance, uh, for the competitive grants is just over, uh, one point one million. So there's a good chunk of change in there if, for some of these projects, we've been talking about housing and other things would, it's a pretty good start. One point one million, so.
Yes.
Um, so if you, this is just a call out. I see Catherine's on there. I'm sure she probably has something. Um, but, uh, those are opening tomorrow, so, uh, be on the lookout. And, um, they're due back, uh, November seventeenth. Um, and then those, just for, uh, everyone's, uh, recollection, uh, those will be reviewed by our internal grant review committee. And then those come directly to the county court since the budget committee is not active this time of year. Um, so those will come to us.
Those have them for the first or second court meeting in December, depending on what court, what the court decides to do for meetings.
And how many applicants we have, probably. We have just a handful. We can probably, this then, so it's gonna be quickly in December. Um, Sherry, what do you got going on?
Not very much. Norcore tomorrow.
Oh, you're.
Don't worry, it's a board meeting. She's not.
Oh, yeah, I'm not going to. She's not.
There are days when I have asked if maybe solitary confinement could be worked out after I've had a specific, particularly rough day with my toddler.
Board meeting and, uh, the package is on the website if anyone's interested.
Pat?
Yeah.
Well, you are a short drummer.
Pat, what do you got going on?
Um, well, I went to the Arlington City Council meeting this month. We had a Creole meeting upstairs in the big room, second one, that Creole has, um, held here at Grand West Building in Arlington, Oregon. I went to the C W C D board meeting last week and then talked a lot about, um, their role in the weed advisory committee and which were all moving forward. Um, met with Larry Johnson, we talked about earlier and we've got an idea of what he's thinking in the future. And I had a really good meeting with Mayor Buckton Sunday. Um, I think we've established some, just a real good relationship and look forward with some of the things that are happening on the North End and um, I feel really good about that. So also did a interview over measure one oh nine. We're gonna publish broadcast in the end, which I let May lead in to measure one ten. And, uh, so it's, I don't know what you're gonna do. It was gonna have a four-minute broadcast. I think he was gonna go around Condon a- after I interviewed with him and tried to catch some citizens and see what they thought about measure one oh nine. And I wanna know what I thought the citizens thought about it. Think that maybe in Gillum County, there's not a lot of focus on measure one oh nine. So you might not have got a lot of input, but.
That's the magic measure.
So, but we did have a pretty deep discussion about both one oh nine and one ten and at least my opinion of what those are. I've got a lot of passion around drug addiction and so, yeah, thanks.
Um, so for me, let's see, um, things to note, I, um, the commissioners know that I B C C G U that there is a potential business that is looking at a shutter station. that there is a potential business that is looking at a shutter station. Um, that could be interesting. I don't even have the name of them, but that may have potential synergy with what Waste Management is doing.
That's going to be pretty attractive to them with what's named, if they're...
That's what I'm hoping.
And that, and that's through Business Organ is?
Business Organ is doing the recruitment, and it's a recycling company, Plastics, uh, that would be looking at locating, I think, uh, up to a hundred and fifty jobs wherever they land. And so...
So they have to help us with housing as well?
Yep, so we are hoping that the fact that Waste Management is here and has a lot of plastics coming in, maybe enticing to them to consider investing here. We are working on that right now. And let's see, on the fiber front, we have a fiber fellow on board. His name is Michael Morrow. And he is actually going to be based out of Salem, because he is finishing his MBA there. So doing primarily remote work. And but he is going to really be providing some capacity and keeping our fiber initiative moving forward. And one of the things that I have tasked him with doing is, um, most of the counties who are actively positioning themselves to go after broadband infrastructure dollars have created a broadband action team and formalized it. And so that is something that Business Organ has recommended we look at doing as well. And just as one more thing to check off the box when we go after those funds. And so I have asked Michael to help put that together. And so it'll, it'll be the same characters who have been around the table and who come and see us when we talk about fiber. Um, but it's just more formalizing that process and getting them meeting regularly and thinking about when we build this network, who's going to own it? Who's going to maintain it? How do we, you know, like, really strategizing around how we're going to manage it? Um, because we are assuming that we are going to be receiving those dollars and that we will actually be delivering fiber to the home, and that is our goal. So, um, that is moving forward. I'm excited about that. He is also going to be working with Catherine at the city to do a couple of projects that the city is interested in. Um, I will also reach out to, obviously, if Arlington was interested, but I think it's mostly the TV co-op that might be interested in. So I will also make a connection between him and the TV co-op. And, and so we should see some more activity happening around that. Um, one of the things we also likely will be doing is I will task him at looking at developing a broadband strategic plan that's countywide. And currently, the city of Condon has one, and that's it. And so we kind of have borrowed some of their principles and, but we haven't actually formalized that. And so I think it would be helpful to actually have something on paper. And, and so I would go in to task him with drafting that. Now, it will eventually come back to us as the court, so look at and tinker with and get feedback on and approved. Um, and then the other big initiative is childcare, of course. And that is what I spend all of my weeking hours thinking about and working on, if I don't have something else. And every meeting that I am in, I raise. Uh, so our legislators already have been put on notice that they can expect childcare to come up in every meeting, whether it's relevant to the topic or not. Um, some things, uh, just to note, uh, in addition to the home-based stuff that Delaney and Kalen talked about, we are still working on building a workforce pipeline, um, which I will come and formally present to the court at an upcoming meeting. I'm still tinkering a little bit with the details. And, but basically, the idea is that we create a pathway where when our youth are identifying as, hey, I'm interested in babysitting, or, hey, I may be interested in early education, there is a step and then a clear pathway. And basically, we're linking existing programs that we have. Um, so for instance, OSU has a super sitter program that Merrily is trained in. And so she's working on maybe putting together an annual workshop for kids who are interested in maybe doing babysitting for younger siblings or, you know, just being available for families that need, um, you know, an evening away or something. And then that progressing up to our work experience program, um, internship programs, the Columbia Gorges, um, some of their pre-college stuff. And so I'm having a meeting next week with the college to talk about, and our superintendents, about ways to better connect our juniors and seniors to their coursework, um, really getting the college to rethink how they deliver those coursework. Because right now, you have to be available from six to eight P M. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, which for most high school juniors and seniors is not going to be feasible. And so figuring out if they can change that delivery mechanism so that students can take them during their actual elective periods during the day. And so we're going to be having some of those discussions. And then, um, I will be coming back, updating you on facilities. The big asks, both centers, I think, are going to need either expansion or new, or new buildings. And, um, funding. Funding is the other big issue that we really can't get around. And so we're going to have to, I think, be creative about not just what the county is creating. I also would like us to be figuring out how to better engage our other community partners. Um, I will just put on the record, one of the things I've been thinking about for our community partners out there, I would like all of us to come to the table and commit that we're going to pay for the slots that our employees need. Um, that if, if the school districts, the E S D, um, everybody says that I will pay the full load when my staff has a child coming through, that means that the county's contribution can remain basically what it is, but give the centers what they need to be able to operate. And I feel like as public entities, um, we've got to sort of lead by example. I can't go to Waste Management and ask them to put the whole bill for their folks if we're as a county not willing to do it and if our cities and other districts don't do it. So, um, and given how hard it is to recruit, honestly, somebody being told that your childcare is covered is probably a good recruitment tool at this point. And so, um, so I'm just putting that on the record. I feel like that's going to have to be part of the conversation with our other, especially public partners, um, that we have, we have to step up and start funding, um, because there's just not... The centers can't recruit. Um, and if they don't have teachers, it doesn't matter how many buildings we build for them. They will not be able to, to provide care. So, um, but I am working right now on a larger roadmap that outlines all of these different things, so the public understands how they all work together. And so we can go through as a court how that looks together. Um, and the other thing we need to be doing is every time we have one of our senators or representative here, we have to be talking about the state and the feds paying their fair share, because our, our publicly funded slots, which are coming from Head Start and, and Preschool Promise, do not cover the bill, which means our taxpayers are paying for those slots twice. They pay for them through their federal and state taxes, and then they pay through, through them with the county's contribution. And, uh, the state and feds need to pick up their full share. So, that's my spiel. Pat's heard it like three times this week.
He should be able to repeat it.
Yeah.
The, um... Funding that you're talking, of course, there's funding out there within the, within everything federal government's done, but that's going to be more along the lines of capital funding for them. Facilities were not in place in the city. Um, so when they, when the daycare system so far had come to the county with grant requests, we've pretty much cut back every time, which I really haven't been affected from. And that, that, and I guess we're further along in a better understanding of where we're at and where we're going, so more comfortable with, with funding some of that stuff than we have been in the past. Is that a fair statement?
So what I would say is that we still have a ways to go with both centers in maximizing the amount they're bringing in from other funding partners. So, for instance, the center here in Arlington does not take employment-related daycare subsidies from DHS, which is a huge loss. So for your average, say, minimum wage worker, they technically should qualify, because employment, employment-related daycare, ERDC, is specifically for people who need daycare to work.
Good.
The state picks up, like, well above what, I mean, for instance, um, for infant toddler, it's eleven hundred dollars per month. And the center here is leaving, first of all, their, their families are paying the full rate, which they shouldn't be doing if they're paying minimum wage, if they're being, they're making minimum wage.
And so we give rate because of their rate, but then there's a health to cause, I mean...
No. And so if we could get, for instance, the Arlington Center to accept ERDC, which, um, it's complicated getting that reimbursement, but the Condon Center, who has been doing that, has offered to help them do the billing so that they can meet the state's requirements. Um, but then the other thing that they need to do, and this is where it's tricky, is the state will not pay more than what you are charging private families. So what Condon has done is they have taken the funds that we have given them, and they use that as tuition scholarships for their families. So they are charging the state the full rate. And then for the ones that we're subsidizing, there are those families that are private payers are coming in at the seven hundred or whatever it is. Um, but the state's paying a full eleven hundred, and that's been allowing Condon to receive a full amount. Arlington's not even receiving a dime. So we have a long ways to go in making sure that they, that we're getting all of those dollars. The other thing I would say is I think, um, both the Arlington Preschool and Condon receive Head Start dollars from Yemantel Morehead Start. I am not sure that Yemantel Morehead Start is covering what it costs to actually provide the service. So that is the other piece, um, that they need to get that fully. Because we are backfilling them every time that they short them. Um, and so, and those are publicly, like, the families are, are not paying. Um, so we are definitely the stopgap on those dollars. And so that's what I was saying on the state and feds. Preschool Promise is a similar one. Those are coming through. Those dollars are not fully getting to, the Condon Center takes Preschool Promise. The state level is not high enough to cover what it costs to provide the care. And Yemantel More is not passing through the full amount. Um, so that's two. So all of this to say, all of these funding streams um, all need to be coming into all of our centers at the full amount. And then we also need to be advocating with state and feds that they need to actually be covering what it costs to provide the care. And then the county should feel good reimbursing on the rest.
Okay.
Um...
Good explanation.
Yeah, it's complicated. Um, yeah. And I'm becoming a expert on ratios and funding streams and all kinds of fun stuff. Um, but yes, uh, funding, I think we should expect that some of that will go up. And maybe the conversation, the conversation that I would like to start with our court is whether we need to look at, rather than doing year-by-year funding this, if we need to look at creating an endowment that's long-term and sustainable for them, because...
I would say maybe if we get the rest of it, these holes plugged, so that we don't just do that, and then that's still, all that's still out there.
Yeah. Yeah, because in order for an endowment to be sustainable on the long term, the other partners really do need to pick up the full amount. And we also need employers who are committing to paying what it costs for their employees to access that care in order to go to work. Um, or at least a portion, even if they can cost share with their employees, uh, employees in some way. And that, I think, is going to have to happen. Otherwise, it's just us backfilling for all of the other employers. And we have some employers here who can afford to cover the cost. Um, so I think that will also need to be part of the conversation. If, there's a lot of things that need to happen in order for all of this to work. And so, anyway, but I will be laying it all out on a large, nice roadmap, so you can see all of the different things and how they all fit together. Um, and then other counties can call us in five years when they figure out it's important. And, and we'll tell them how to fix it.
If you get out there enough, it won't take five years.
True.
Following.
True. Usually what I see these, um, like, why is she bringing this up at the beginning of the conversation? Usually by the end, people are like, oh, okay, I see that. Um, so, yeah, maybe in a couple more years, they'll actually, it'll absorb why, why it matters. Um, okay, it is, do we have anything else with a good order? If not, it is twelve seventeen, and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.